It's the first time I've seen this letter. I don't know exactly what their legal options are under Section 39 of the Judiciary Law, which is what they refer to, so I don't know exactly what that means. If I could interrupt, when we were here, when we received this letter and the representative from OCA was here, he said yes, they will take it away. And his recommendation, sorry, it's not a definitive, he said his recommendation is strongly that they will, in fact, take it away from us.
And bill a court, not a police station.
And sent the front row out there instead of the entire council? I think on two separate occasions.
And I had General within December, I agree, I heard the same message personally.
So, being that you're saying that you haven't had time to read this, give us a clear definition from your suggestions to the council?
Well, I mean, this project has gone through all kinds of approval. I mean, it approved the bidding, approved the budget, everything came in within the specifications. The bidders were identified, they were qualified, but it just doesn't matter, this procedure requires a comeback to the common council for the final approval of the contract, but I, I mean, that's actually, it's your decision, but I don't, there's nothing in what's happened that suggests that it was being brought back to be reconsidered, it's just that the contracts can't be signed by the mayor without, you know, the stamp of approval.
Can you repeat that again, sorry?
I said, there's not, this isn't back here because it's, there was no intention to have this being reconsidered or any kind, it's after having gone through the process, as laid out, way back, a budget was set, bonding was established, a budget for the construction was done, the bids came in, the aggregate of the bids was within the budget, everything is gone according to the way it was set out to have been done, but now that the actual counterpart is, the contractors have been named and the money, the mayor needs the authorization from the council to put a signature on the contract, so it's, it is back in front of you, it's more a formal step, it wasn't, it isn't being brought back here because there are issues or problems or concerns or anything, but it does take it this.
We're required to approve the contracts.
What, can you, sorry, you said there weren't, can you repeat what you just said, I'm sorry, there wasn't any issues or consent, what did you say?
No, it, in fact, before I was involved, the budget was established, the bidding process was open, the bids, multiple bids came in for each of the four components, these are probably broken down into four areas especially, general construction, HVAC, plumbing and electric, so you get firms that specialize in each of those four areas to bid on the areas, we had multiple bidders for each of them, the low bidders were identified, they were qualified, they put in their qualifications, everything is gone just as the plan was set out, but it, and so I, but the mayor, but contracts, the final contracts have to be approved by the council, so it's come back to the council to give your authorization for the mayor to sign them.
No, I understand that, I just wanted a clear interpretation of the letter that you have in front of you, it's saying indeed, if this council does not proceed with this project, that they won't take over, if that's, if that's.
At the same time, the council unanimously approved to go forward in November, and why we're going back is, and right now, as far as I can tell, in reading the contracts, they're all within the budget, we agreed to.
This should just be roll call vote.
What was the amount of that agreement back in January?
$4.3 million, Doc.
I don't know about that.
That's true, that's true, we have, we have part of that, and from the beginning, I'm clear with that, from the beginning, I was indirectly, directly, a lot of time, counsel, tried to tell the person that it's cost you for $5 million, and it is on the record, you will be located this, I was all the time, tried to tell them that will be happening. So anyhow, we went further, I love to see the police building, I love to see that code building, but I believe that it is misleading, I believe that it is misleading, I believe that new, I have a question, it's a new police code building, they have a new roof, I have a question, that, that police cars are parking, they have a parking garage, who will be cleaning the police, I have a question, so code, code is the holding place, the people, you have a, that, I have a question, you have a general, we got you $4.3 million, I'm telling you today, after six months, you will be asking more money for that, so question, my question is, you, first time, we, 1.7 million, and 3 to, 2 million is coming, we give the $33,000 for the scoop down, but still, we can see that it's more money coming in the bidding, so what is the scoop down for, we pay the $33,000? My question is, a lot of work left out, still, that I, very much, we are very, we have no choice, I, I think so, but, 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 I'm, I'm telling you that, this, I think Alderman, I have not taken a distant responsibility to anything and part of the taxpayer money, I mean, still, I told you that, I still take it that, from the beginning, we are fighting last, to last, last council, that that's the happen, so question is, bringing that, you know that, who, who will be bringing this situation, we pay the one and a half year, two year, borrowing the money, the interest, so will we go more than $5 million? So question is, that, we try to walk it out, we love to see that new place, we love to see that, but we should not ego, that I play the taxpayer money.
What changed when you voted for it?
Can you answer that question?
Tiffany, I can't answer your question because I've just seen this letter and it doesn't say what they're gonna do, it says that we would consider our legal options under Section 39 of the Judiciary Law. I don't know off the top of my head what that is, people have said that they have been here and told the council what they plan to do, but I can't, just by Section 39 of the Judiciary Law, I cannot answer that question off the top of my head, I don't know what, I haven't seen this letter before just now, and I, so I don't know exactly what that section says, but is it, I mean, several people.
Can I look it up to see? Charles, meeting?
Well, I'm sorry, I do know what it says.
We were all here.
I'm trying to have the floor.
This is ridiculous.
I do know what it says, and it says that, it says that OCA can take it away from us. There's no question, they did this in Beagle, it cost them $10 million.
Newburg.
It cost them $10 million, or thereabouts. Whatever it costs, if we do it, it's gonna cost this much more, $4.3 million, if we don't do it, I guarantee it'll cost more. Will we still have to come back and maybe spend a few more dollars? Perhaps, perhaps, but our engineer, our architect, I guess, only put in about a 3%, what is it called, contingency, and we have a 10%, so we've, so now we have a 13% contingency. So I think we've taken some reasonable steps towards containing the cost, but the other reality is, as we all know, and anybody who's been in the city police department or the courts know, is that this city hasn't spent a dime on either of those buildings in anybody's lifetime, yours and mine, sir, you've got a few extra years on me, but that's the reality. This has been, promises have been made and broken, and made and broken, and made and broken for years, and OCA is tired of it, their employees are tired of it, I can tell you, for the bar, we're tired of it, and I'm sure the police department is tired of those really disgusting conditions that they're forced to do business in, and the folks who have to do business with them are also disrespected by the same conditions, the same poor conditions, and it's a bad reflection on the city. The city is in the midst of a renaissance, why wouldn't we spend a couple bucks on ourselves? And as, you know, Alderman Rector has pointed out repeatedly since about 5:30 this evening, we voted on this, and voted on this, and voted on this, and the outcome is always the same. We voted for this, now it's time for us to pull the plug, it's time to do it.
That's what I'd like to get to, because we have been talking about this all afternoon and evening, and it seems that some members who have previously approved this now are wanting to change, without getting a very, without being very specific about what their change would be, and that's been the issue, there's never been a Plan B presented to this council, there's only been the finish line, and what we're living with, and we've agonized over the budget three or four times, in November, we approved it within a dollar amount, and we're still within that dollar amount, so if someone wants to vocalize what they're not telling us, or give us that Plan B, that's a little miracle that, I don't know what it is, but all of a sudden, now the minds are changing, but you really can't, because, John, we've already approved this, is there something I'm missing?
And nobody who's.
My question, excuse me, from what I understood from what Alderman, Mia was saying, if we was to consider this, because I know we all want our police and courts building to have the best building, especially for that amount of money, with that being said, and with Alderman, what Alderman and Mia just said, when this building was to be purchased, the roof still needs to be repaired, is that right?
Yes.
Who cares, these are contracts people are locked into, there's not gonna be a change. It's a building contract, this is a very routine thing for municipality, if there's something you're not certain of, please, could you back it up with facts?
Well, she just said the roof does not.
Where'd that come from?
I, do they have a new roof?
Yeah.
Hmm?
City already owns the building.
My, you have a new roof?
Excuse me?
You, you put in a new painting, you have a new roof?
No, we didn't need a new roof when we bought it, it doesn't need a new roof today.
I thought it might be, yeah, that's okay.
Or a paint job.
Oh, I know. My worry about that after six months, you will be asking the money, wouldn't that be a question?
You would have asked before you voted on it, the last draw, really?
I asked for a people, you are not that kind, council, you're not.
Yes, I was.
Yeah, I asked.
Okay, all right, okay.
I asked.
After this.
He was sitting across again.
Yo, when we want to build a brand new building, ground up, the specifications, the police department and the city courts, $3.2 million, a number of years ago, we were told, oh, we got a building here, we can do it for 1.7 million, and then the bids came back, $3.2 million, shocked all everybody involved, but then, now it's going from 3.2 up to 4.3, and as he said, it'll probably go to five, we can still build a brand new building and not be any higher.
And continue to go around and around on this matter.
And be no higher, of course.
With approvals that, with approvals that the previous council made, and you were on that council.
And as far as the Plan B, from my understanding, as we was brought up earlier, Charles Williams School was Plan A, and the Plan B was the co-op building that was shut down by council members that didn't want to see the place there.
Tiffany, I think what Alderman O'Hara said, that they looked at several different venues, there was never, there was never anything specifically done until they selected the finish line, that's Plan A, that's the only plan we've ever had on the table.
But we didn't have, we didn't have authorizations and any money, it was just Alderman spending their time and their, and their expertise trying to find a solution to a problem that apparently had been solvable for over two decades. We looked at three properties, the finish line was the only one that satisfied all the criteria, and it was available for purchase. St. Harry's School was the first, was the preferred choice, I think of everybody on the council at that time, which is four or five years ago, and, or three or four years ago, rather, and, but the diocese wasn't interested in selling the building?
Mr. Hughes?
I really don't have any questions, but I noticed my friend Alderman Mia got a little excited, and some of the things, because I know people in the audience kind of probably wanna know what he was stating, is that the price of the building is 4.3, and he was saying that the price of the building does not include, if you're gonna build the building ground up, does not include a new roof, a foyer, or a waiting room for clients as they're coming in, and, and also a new parking, or covered parking for the current cars as they have it, and that's, that's what I think you were trying to say, and that's for the crowd to see.
Doc?
I just wanted to address Alderman Rodriguez's concern about the, about OCA, it's the person who spent most of the time, who was the principal contact with OCA, they have the authority to withhold state funds that come to the city, such as CHIPS funds, which is about a one and a quarter million dollar, not, no, I'm sorry, it's revenue insurance, it's one and a quarter, they can withhold any funds that come to the city, A, and they can, B, decide that they will build a building and then bill us for it, and that's the authority that they have, and it's in, it's in state law.
Would they make that decision if this council decided not to proceed, or would they make that decision, or would they not make that decision if this council decides, yes, they want to proceed with the project, but want the police to have a better location?
I think that at this point, what, everything I, in all honesty, what they told me was, this has gone far enough, this is the location, if you think about the amount of time that it's taken to get to this conclusion, my considered opinion is they do not want to have another project, and that's what I've been told.
They would take over the other side? You think they would take over the project?
I do think so, Doc, yes, I really do.
I don't have anybody listening, actually.
I'd just like to ask the commissioner, sir, is, is the Union Street location acceptable to the members of the HPD?
After all these years? I was commissioner back in '02, and we tried to get a building back then, and here we are in '16. This building is acceptable, anything to get out of that hellhole is acceptable. I was at every meeting, the judge sat in the front row, and made it perfectly clear that if this project, as it stated, does not go through, they'll take over this project and bill the city Huts.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Doc, now this is your next question, I'm sure.
I just want to try to make some budget, there's already been, as of, nearly a million dollars spent on this to date, $680,000 to buy the building, over $300,000 other to date, so that's just something to be aware of, this has already been spent on this project.
Anyone else?
I'll just throw my two cents in, too. Dating back to 2002 and I think 2005, we had proposals for police stations, one was $23,000 square feet, one was $21,000, this, I believe, is $15,000 square feet, they were both around $3.6 million, there's a big difference between then and today, the common council, both occasions, would not approve any monies towards the purchase of a new police courtroom facility, you have a common council right here that's willing to spend up to 4.3 and even more, there's only one question you need to ask yourself, are we, are the taxpayers getting the best bet, if you will, for 4.3 or even more dollars? If you think that particular place is the best place to spend well over $4 million, then vote it in, that's what I would suggest, but you can't tell me for certainty, and, well, I'd rather not say, I've had conversations, but there's no way the court of administrations would ever sanction the city of Hudson for having the will of wanting to spend over $4 million, but just wants to put the place in the proper location, there's no way they would take over the project, you're saying, yeah, we'll spend the money, sure we will, $4 million, $4.5 million, $5 million, we just wanna have the best project that we can give the courts and police, if you think this is the best project, vote it in.
I would just like to say, if you think that you can build a building from the ground up, starting from the foundation, starting with the framing, and then build it up to the specifications of the police, and more importantly, the courts, which have very high and very expensive requirements, if you think you can do all of that for the same amount of money that you can retrofitting an existing building, I would be surprised to think that that was true, and I would encourage you to consider whether or not you can build a palace that people are somewhat presenting much larger square feet, much nicer, much bigger, for the same amount of money that we're retrofitting a relatively reasonably sized building for. I'm not a construction manager, but I've done enough building in my life to question whether or not that is a valid comparison.
Has a vote. Any other discussion?
Please send this to public reference, how do you think it would be going?
Any year. To approve the contracts, that's what we're voting on, we're not voting on whether we're going to build.
We're approving the contracts at this point.
Motion's on the floor. Time for a vote.
Okay, have a motion and a second roll call vote. Hudson Testifano. Aye. Alden Donahue.
I don't wanna say aye, but I guess with the court administration bringing down our necks, I guess I have to say aye.
Graydon.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
I'm going to say aye, because what the commissioner just said, get any place, getting out of there, as he stated, is a hellhole where they are now, I do believe for that amount of money, they would have a better place, and I know you can agree with that, but that's what it is, and that's what you want, then aye.
Hadda.
Aye.
Key.
Aye.
Mia.
I wanna say aye, and also others says, we are pushed to look so much deeper, we can build up the nice building, our, any infusion, our, any project, we should not look at a political wise decision, we should look at it, we should look at what is a fit for, what is better for the city, so I say aye, and our, I love to see the, our police department having a new place, and I love to see that, but I'm, and I, on the other hand, I told you that, find that, what is the situation coming, I don't take any responsibility, but I am telling them, what is, why we come from that, this position, we have no choice, so we are going to say aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara. Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
I personally do not like the location, nor the building, but because Commissioner Graziano has expressed such strong support for this location and this building, aye.
Carrie.
Carrie?
Carrie.
Resolution number two, authorizing approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Civil Service Employees Association to establish the job title of bookkeeper within the office of the City Treasurer and the City of Hudson. They have an introduction in a second.
Great question. Question?
This was not on your notice, on your call, a special meeting.
It was, it was a very biased notice.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, because I know that there was a lot of concern about personnel in your office, Perry, or this affects that, could you just address it, please?
What would you like me to do?
Well, I don't know, I know you've told me and the finance committee in the past that there were some issues with changes to personnel, this is, I don't know, seems to deal with that, I'd just like to understand.
Well, it certainly does. Let's put things in perspective, so the City Treasurer's office consists of three people right now, one is an account clerk that does basic billing information, and the current account clerk does not have a basic understanding of accounting, so they're limited to things like putting in daily receipts and things like that, but doesn't really understand things like debits and credits and bigger issues with the general ledger. We had a senior account clerk who had been with the treasurer's department for a very long time, and she was very capable, she has unfortunately, fortunately for her, unfortunately for the city, retired. The third person is, of course, the city treasurer, the city treasurer is an elected position, you get elected every two years, and there are literally fewer qualifications to be city treasurer than there is to be account clerk, and I don't think there's any question in anybody's minds that we've had some good treasurers in the past, and we've had some very bad treasurers in the past, but what I think you can't do is assume that the treasurer is going to be competent or capable, so you really need to make sure that the two people who are gonna have continuity in the office, and these are the only two people with continuity over the city's finances, period, should have, in my opinion, some basic, reasonably high level qualifications. A bookkeeper is actually an entry level position, right now, the city only has one entry level clerk position, period, it's an account clerk, to be an account clerk, you have to know how to add and subtract and to do some other things, but you do not have to understand the basics of accounting. A senior account clerk does, but that's generally a promotional thing, so I'm recommending that this position be turned into a bookkeeper position, something I wanted to do regardless, the salary is basically the same as a senior account clerk, so there's no impact on the budget, it guarantees that the entry level person coming in has basic understanding of accounting, so they can come in and immediately start working with the general ledger system. It also happens to be a very convenient time to do it, because they just gave a bookkeeper exam, which means that the city would have the opportunity to be pretty early on in the list, and hopefully get a highly qualified person, because this person will likely be there for the next 30 years and be one of the two people, you know, that are dealing through all the administrations and all the, you know, all the changes, so that's it in a nutshell.
So when you say bookkeeper, what us folks of a certain age might call full charge bookkeeper, somebody who understands, well, I agree, that understands the debit and the credit side of the bookkeeping process.
Yes.
Somebody who can deal with accounts payable, accounts receivable.
Absolutely, and obviously, you know, municipal county is its own unique beast, so there are some things to be learned, but yeah, there's a lot of things that go on in the municipality that are strange and unusual, and understanding how to deal with those is quite important, you know, full disclosure, ideally, I think both of the people in the treasurer's office should have that skill set so that they can interchange, but that's neither here nor there for now, but we do have an open position right now, and there, even if you wanted to keep it a senior account clerk, there aren't really any senior account clerks out there, we waited for months, because civil service said they were giving a test, and only after they gave the test, did they explain to me that I could not actually hire anybody who passed the test, because it was considered promotional, not competitive, so I could have had somebody in five months ago if that had not been miscommunicated, so I'm currently one senior account clerk short, and I was actually, I can probably do it for the first time in probably half a decade, was the only person in the office for four days last week, because my other person was out sick, so I'd like to get somebody in, if that'd be okay with y'all.
Thanks. Same as the senior account clerk, so it's a wash, same as the one.
And I dispute the civil service.
$42,000.
This is no additional funds.
It's no additional funds, in fact, it will be less because of, for two reasons, so let me just say, the salary came about because I spoke with the civil service and they said they looked at the range of senior account clerks. and they said they looked at the range of senior account clerk salaries and the range of bookkeeper salaries, and they were very similar. So we decided to just keep it the same, so they would be even. From a year-to-year basis, it will actually be cost savings for two reasons. One is that the person who retired gets longevity payments. And so, and she had all of her longevity in, so that would be a savings. In addition, the CSEA contract requires that the, that a newly employed person, so their salary is the forty-two, I think it's forty-two, two forty-seven, is that right? But you don't make that the first year. You make, I believe, eighty-five percent, and then ninety, and then ninety-five, and then in the fourth year, you make the full salary. So if anything, it's actually a minor cost savings. Although I wouldn't necessarily be willing to give much money back yet because we're probably going to need more accounting and help as we transition from, you know, losing the 32 years of experience that we've just lost.
So how long would it take you to fill that position if we approve this this year?
If we approve it, the Civil Service is actually already tentatively canvassing for it with the stipulation that it's pending council approval on both the position and the salary. I believe they told me it generally takes about 10 days. And then we would have a list of candidates to interview, and then it would be the interview process, and then we'd have someone in.
Thank you.
Just as a correction, the amount is forty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-two. I have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call vote? President Destefano.
Aye.
Alden Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Coriga.
Aye.
Hadda.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scolera.
Aye.
Carey. Local laws, proposed local law introductory number one of 2016, local law to establish the RSC two zoning district and to designate hotel as a conditionally permitted use in the southern waterfront area, RSC two district. May I have an introduction in a second? Alexis.
I have a question.
Oh, question? Sorry.
I think you need an introduction in a second before we have a conversation about it.
Can I have an introduction in a second? Mike, Chrisong.
For this, after further review, like to motion that we tabled this and refer back to the legal committee so we can clearly define the southern waterfront area.
This was going to be placed on your desk.
Does that mean we have to vote?
No, no, no.
No, what I'm asking for is an introduction in a second tonight.
No vote until after the ZBA meets on March 16.
It has to go to the planning board.
And joining, yes.
Because the bad reason I couldn't have this-
It has to go to the planning board until we pass it. It has to go to the planning until we pass it.
It's going to be at least a month because it's got to go to at least the planning board. Probably county plan, but it depends on the location and some things which couldn't act with the matter today. We're going to send it to county planning just to make sure. So it's got to go through that cycle of going to those other boards before the public hearing in any case. So it's going to get, it's going to at least carry over for a month. But, I mean, if anybody wants to ask me questions about specifics now, like-
Does this change tie back into the ultimate development of the property as described in the LWRP?
The LW, what this does, just to reiterate or recap it, there is currently the RSC, which is defined as a district, but there are three different and separate parts, regions that are called RSC. One of them is down near Cross Street and southern, southern area near the vicinity of the railroad station. The other one's up in the northern part toward the north base. And one of them is along Columbia Street. And at the legal committee meeting, it was discussed, and I was asked to rewrite the law so that this change would only affect the area in the vicinity of the train station. And-
The first ward.
The first. The first ward.
First ward.
In fact, in the LWRP, the LWRP talks about three different water, sort of water-directed areas. The north, the north, northern waterfront area, like the central district and the southern waterfront area. And it's actually in the discussion of the southern waterfront area that it specifically talks about the plan to do some rezoning and the RSC, which includes the hotels. And so the discussion of that is actually in the southern waterfront area discussion in the LWRP. And so it seems to be consistent with that to make this change. So in doing it, just as a matter of drafting law, it just creates a separate, after this section for the RSC in the code. It just creates this section that comes right after that, 325-13A, which is governed by all the exact same rules as the regular RSC district. And it, with the one exception that it allows the additional use of a hotel in that portion. So the only part of the RSC, what is currently the RSC that would be changed would be the area down Frost Street near this train station, which would allow hotels as conditional uses, so they still have to go through the whole process. And that's what I believe you ultimately asked, that they revise it to do just do that.
Yes. John?
You answered one of my questions, Tim, but my second is more prosaic. There's no section that allows our authority to act.
Okay, and that's technical thing if we need to put that in. We can add that. The substance has to be laid on the desk, but-
But we can move forward this next week?
Well, it has to go through planning and-
It only goes to planning after we pass it.
No, it goes to county, it goes to planning, it's 325-4. It goes to planning before the public hearing, not actually.
But there's not mandatory public hearing before the city council. No mandatory public hearing before the city council, either.
3240 amendments. This chapter, the ready part may be amended by the common council. It's on a motion, not a petition. As provided, every such proposed amendment shall be referred by the common council to the planning board for a report before the public hearing, unless the planning board fails to render, goes on.
It's the planning board's public hearing. We have to pass it, refer it to the planning board. The planning board has 30 days.
It says the common council shall not take action upon any such amendment without a recommendation from the planning board. So it does have to go through the cycle.
Yeah, but it doesn't get to the planning board without us doing so.
Don't take any action until it goes to the planning board.
But how does it get to the planning board if we don't do anything? Unless somebody brings it.
It says, it says, every such proposed amendment shall be referred by the common council to-
So we have to vote it to the planning.
We have to refer it to the planning. That's how I understand it.
Yeah. Otherwise, it doesn't get there because nobody else is bringing it.
Right. It's something that introduced.
So we have to approve it, or at least provisionally approve it, send it to the planning board. They have 30 days, as I read the statute. Do either act upon it or essentially to allow it to pass by not acting upon it, at which point it comes back here to be passed again. Then it goes, at the same time, it goes to county. I mean, it usually takes 30 to 45 days for the county to approve changes.
But we're not voting on anything that's part of the discussion tonight.
Not tonight, we can't. All we can do is put it on our desk.
Yeah, we make a motion that it's not on our desk and taken, given to the plans, the ZBA.
It's already a motion.
Well, you know, it's proposed, I'm not sure, you know, it's not to the, to what point, but there has to be reviewed by the planning board.
I would suggest the council to give us a clear path to either do this or not do this.
Make a motion to the planning board.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why it has to, it's been introduced. It's being considered. It seems to me that it's right to be passed on for review by other bodies that need to do it, the county planning board.
We can make, we can make that, we can make that part of a motion next week to move it on to the planning board.
So that would be a vote?
Next week.
Yes, absolutely. You can't vote tonight.
Well, I think you can vote to me, you can't vote to enact the law, but I think you can, you can move it for review to bodies that need to look at it. You can move it on to the county planning board, the city planning board.
I guess it, are we still in our special meeting?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are.
Yes.
So maybe we can, I don't know.
How about the zoning board's appeal? Doesn't have to go before then?
No.
It says, so approval of any such amendment, it'll be forwarded to the planning board, zoning board's appeal. But that's after, that's after law change.
But that's, but that's-
That's after it's enacted.
After it's enacted.
It seems to me the prerequisite is planning board has to look at it before you enact it into the code.
Planning.
Well, there's numbers on it. It's up to individual property owners to take it to the ZBA, not to the city.
To make it part of the city, to make it part of the city law, make it part of the city code. Before you can enact it as part of the city code, you have to send it to the city planning board. And I don't see any reason why you can't do that now and refer it to them so they can begin to look at it. And likewise, refer it now to the county planning board so that, if you don't take it up further and nothing, it's moot, it doesn't matter. But there's nothing to stop you. The bill's in it, the proposal's in its substantial form. They can look at it. And I don't see that there needs to be any further delay to just get the ball moving and that you could tonight move to send it to the county planning board and-
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to the planning board.
I don't think that you can do that. I challenge your right to do that. It has to be passed by the spotty next meeting. Then it goes to the planning board. They have 30 days.
When things need to go to county planning board, they cannot be enacted by the municipality until they have come back from the county planning board.
We've never done it that way.
Well, the first thing is everything.
That's 239M. It's state law.
Well, but so, so are, so then are you going to give us advice that that overrides the city code right now? Because the city code right now says that after the council passes it, it goes to the planning board for review.
It says proposed. It doesn't say passed or enacted.
Well, all right, fine, but this is still a informal meeting. You can't vote on it. This is a special.
Again, I make a motion to take what we proposed out of the legal committee and pass it to the planning board for review.
No.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Just like was for county. County planning is also.
Yes, yes.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Oh, we need motion, and the second's laid on the Oldman's desk.
You got that, too.
Yeah. Henry? Anybody else?
John.
John, thank you.
And now I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
All in favor on the-
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Henry?
No, that was laying on the desk, folks.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Copies of committery reports are on the Oldman's desk. Communications, invitation from Philip Abitale with the Columbia Green Safety Tree Committee inviting council members to a special annual ceremony to memorialize victims of drunk driving. And the second communication is on your desk is from the SBK Foundation. We have resolutions. The first resolution is appointing Commissioners Deeds. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Adus? And Tiffany?
Can I say something about this whole Commissioner Deeds thing? I'm pretty sure the charter says we're almost supposed to do that twice a year. But we do it every month. Seems like a waste of freaking time. If you want to be a freaking, no, lady, if I'm a lottery, why are you wasting city's time on this? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
30 seconds of my time.
Second resolution designating the Bank of Green County as the official depository for the City of Hudson. Can I have an introduction in a second? Rick? Mike?
Thank you.
Setting the fee for motor vehicle boot unlocking at $110. And we also have a second one for setting it at $150. Would you like to explain the difference?
If the legal committee, they asked to have a resolution because the boot fee's supposed to be set by the council, asked to put together a resolution setting it at $150 and then, or whatever it is now. And when I looked into it, it was at 110 now. But there's also a second provision that if it isn't paid within 24 hours, then there's a second 110 to act on top of it. So it didn't turn out to be quite what people thought. And so these are the two things that need to be done. But I understand there's going to be a discussion, a discussion with the police tomorrow about this. Or with the tow, I think it was tow. Also, the money, the money goes to the tow, tow, it's not to the city. So I believe the mayor's going to be talking with some of the people who are involved in this tomorrow. So we might get a little better feedback. I think, it just, it turns out what I was asked to do didn't, wasn't what people, we thought it was going to turn out to be, so.
So how are we making, how are we making a resolution on any of this if the mayor is still up in the air?
Well, I just found out about it just before I came over. There's going to be some talk.
Being that it's a fee that we have, this is one of our actual duties that we can actually exercise. And we did, done these in the past. I'd say we just might as well table it until the mayor has this talk tomorrow. Because even if we did introduce it, we could introduce one. We can always change this fee before, at, just before we vote on it next week. So maybe just pick the lower one or something.
It seems that there was some, it seems there was some concern about the tag. It says 24 hours, you get food in.
Well, that is something we have no, we can't do, obviously, with this resolution. We can't really tackle it together. So we, maybe we just don't, what, don't even bother? Wait till the conversation happens tomorrow?
Well, we can introduce it today and vote no not to do anything about it next week.
Well, the fees should be addressed and probably the 24-hour rule as well. And probably even the fact that we have only one person collecting these fees within the city, which is probably another issue that should be tackled.
Of course.
So I personally would say I would not introduce it.
How would you like to go?
A motion to not introduce it. What is it called? Where we did it?
Well, we, the suggestion that it's get tabled until, until after we find out the mayor's conversation. The suggestion that it's get tabled until, until after we find out the mayor's conversation. And possibly, and possibly...
See, I don't really know what we're trying to vote on here, right? Yeah. Motion to table. On both resolutions.
Any other discussion?
Just a few, a few, a few days that we haven't introduced these.
Well, I think we're not introducing them for the very reason that we're tabling them.
Right.
Exactly.
I mean, one, to not introduce them is just not to get a motion second.
We don't need a thing.
We don't have to.
We move on.
Except we don't have, right, we don't have to affirmatively table.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Henry, Susan.
What about the letter?
Oh, well, it's been accepted, it's been accepted. Thank you. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.